It is 7:15. I'm going to call us to official order. Adjustments to the agenda under Action Matters, we're going to add two actions. One is to appoint a proxy for the VIHI Visibit annual meeting this week. And we'll talk more about that when we get there. And also to approve a teacher hire who's already working in our school. So that would be 7.2 and 7.3. 3.0 Audience Communications, I opened it up and there's no audience today. So we go right on, there's no presentations this evening. So we're going to move straight into reports to the board. First up being the principal's report and Barbara, if you'd like to highlight.
Certainly. So in a general update, one of the pieces I want to point to is our three core expectations that we have been rolling out to the entire school. Take care of ourselves, take care of each other, take care of this place. If you've been tracking some of that, it's just a little tweak from previously where it was respect. What we came up with and it came from the teachers themselves, that children didn't have a visual to go with respect, the same way that take care of helps a little bit more. So we did make that switch. It's been seamless and we've continued to do work to help the kids know what does it look like, what does it sound like with the actions. Specifically today, we invited in a guest speaker who was recommended by Williston. Their program is called Sweethearts and Heroes. Tom Murphy is the person who lays that, he's local, from St. Albans. And his focus was on teaching the kids actions to take care of each other. His big message was just like, he just asked the audience, kids know what to do if there's a fire, stop, drop, and roll. They just know it. What he, his message was, we need to help kids know exactly what to do if someone's not being kind, about how we stand up, we're upstanders, how we're allies. So it really fed into the work that we've already done, it built upon it. And our staff meeting today also continued, the brainstorming was pretty phenomenal from the staff and how they're going to embody that further. Other pieces that we've done, the family handbook did go out with further revisions. Again, always wanting it to reflect the most accurate information and that be a resource. And to further encourage family engagement, we collaborated with PTO and many of you were there at the back-to-school community public dinner. It felt great, people responded that way, but you could feel it in the atmosphere. We're going to be furthering our collaboration with PTO by co-sponsoring the PTO meetings where we will be presenting. One of the administrators will be leading a piece of it or bringing in other people to lead pieces of it that will inform our community about topics of interest. So there's four meetings and we'll be leading different ones of those. Tomorrow night, we have a new family pizza party. That's been a tradition to help welcome new families. Having it a little later in the season is intentional to be able to answer any questions that might have bubbled up. We'll also be just going over some pieces of how we do things, but also have people connect with each other. It's actually worked really well, even last year, we're families who are new, connected with other families who are new and built some lasting bonds. We have continued to promote our public relations. We continue to put our celebrations on Front Porch Forum. We do have a new Twitter where we put our newsletter on it and we'll be just continuing that work to really promote the school and all the great things that's happening at the school. There are many new staff, all transitioning very well. And the other piece I wanted to highlight is the, we have a pretty incredible staff committed to their own learning. You could just see the list kept going on and on about what professional development they did. It's impressive. It was not uncommon beyond any paydays, they were in there working, people were working together to work on as teams. Very impressive. There's a lot of new work that's happening and people then at times would also ask, can we work together? It's great. Very, very excited to work with this team. Then the next piece was about student enrollment update. I'm just going to piggyback on what I'd already said. You had asked last year to provide that for you, so you could just see if there are any patterns. So I did break down just a little bit, which is just the obvious, that in grades five through eight, five will go into a private school, and grades K through four, two are going to a private school. Again, the numbers are not huge, but we do, it is an impact that we are aware of. Two things are happening. One is, what I already mentioned, promotion. There is active energy that I'm putting towards promoting and branding. One person had told me, you know, if we don't take the energy and effort to brand, someone will brand us. So we're getting right in front of that. And we are doing so many great things. So that is active effort and you'll hear me talk a lot about different things I'll be doing to that end in the future. The other piece is around grade five through eight. Some of you may have heard my mentioning that there's some middle-level visioning work that is happening. We're at the very, very beginning of that. And it came from our last Hopes and Dreams meeting that happened at the end of last year, where parents voiced, perhaps there can be more different, a little more potential of different things around the middle-level program. So teachers meet with me on, we have a number of meetings. We are becoming quite active, we're studying what other schools are doing, we're going to be visiting other schools, other middle-level programs. And we're going to be working on what is 21st century middle schooling. So that'll be exciting to share with you also as we keep moving forward.
Barbara, when you say other schools, how far are you casting your net there in terms of?
Oh, there's one in New Hampshire that we're, and one in Maine, that we're looking what's considered best. And again, not certain if they really are the best yet, I will know soon, but we're looking. And we're looking at private as well as public. We want to see what is the best that we could offer our kids. And we have all the middle-level teachers involved in that, in that work. And overall, people are really open because there's been some foundational teaching about what middle-level kids need. So coming from that place, people are pretty open. Maybe a little nervous too, about where it might go, but I said, we're in this together, we're going to just learn together. So this is a learning year, nothing big is changing this year. But next year, we'll have some adjustments based on what is really best for our middle-level students. And enrollment as of 9/9/16, it says 356. More recently, it's now 358. Any questions?
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Go ahead.
The one question I was wondering, for those families who elect to move their child or children to another school, I don't know how often they share that information before that decision is made, but I'm wondering if we ever do like exit interviews?
I do exit interviews.
So there's information that can be collected then to try to gather why they're choosing to make that move?
Yes.
And then we use that information to inform the programming that we're doing?
Absolutely, yes.
That actually wasn't my question. Exit interviews, because that is valuable information. And also, perhaps the guidance counselor is kind of teasing out those families that are maybe thinking about, boy, I'm having a rough year, maybe next year I'm going to think about private school. So, you know, certainly having their eyes open and teachers do, to see which kids may be, you know, looking at trends, you know, these kids acted this way during their seventh grade and then eighth grade, they've gone to private school. So I think we can learn a lot from those upper grade kids that move on. My other question was the, you mentioned the higher level math classes that were going to be offered to the upper grades and I was curious if you could just talk a little bit about what that would look like.
So probably that's not exactly the wording I would use. It's more about offering two pieces. One is identifying students who may need deeper learning. And going deeper doesn't mean always that we just accelerate and skip, which that is a philosophical piece that is grounded in research of what really benefits kiddos is how to go deeper and think critically and really grapple with it. So that is what we're offering, not as a class, but in terms of that we're providing training to teachers in that. We're also providing time in the day where their children will get access to some of that. It's not a class though.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So it doesn't look like the, oh, here's the honors class or the accelerated class. It doesn't look like that.
Right, right. And you're still teaching algebra for eighth graders, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So is that part of the role of the new position that we created?
Yes, and it's also part of, there's point two of a person who's in math, the math coach is taking on point two because her expertise is math specifically, which we know is, we've recognized through some of the exit interviews, was an area that people have said that is where they want their kids to be able to go deeper. And then also the new position, it's absolutely what it is, yeah.
Then, I don't want to jump ahead of anyone, but can you just back me up a step? Were there any common themes besides maybe the math that jumped out at you from those exit interviews?
The other pieces were more values, personal values, that there weren't ones where public school.
Gotcha. Anything else for Barbara?
I think it's really great that we let kids who have withdrawn come back to dances because I think that really shows something about our community and that the kids want to come back to CCS dances who live, who haven't moved but have gone to, off to another school. So I think that's risky, but it's, you know, it's.
It's part of community building and promotion. Let them see the great stuff and.
People have different opinions on it, but when, you know, you sit with it and think about it, it kind of is a great reflection on CCS, I think that that's not a big deal.
I also had families show up to our community potluck that may not have had students there and that was, we invited, we casted a big invitation out and we even had community members show up.
Yeah, it was great.
I thought that was great.
And the assembly today, you know, my kids were talking about on the way home from the bus stop, you know, it's that guy who took his shirt off and became superhero Tom Murphy, you know, it was kind of, did you go to the assembly? Because it sounded like it was really fun. So it's just great when the kids have things to talk about that aren't, you know, academic, that it's like just those assemblies. So thanks for putting those together.
And just, and I know I've highlighted this before, this is more for the cameras, anybody that hasn't been to the school recently should take a walk into the new lobby area and take a look at some of the work that was done this summer. I think you did a really nice job. Thank you. 5.2, the CVSD debrief. I shouldn't say that more than once. The Champlain Valley School District, for those who may be watching at home, is the new school board that will be taking over what this board does next year. They came into a legal existence two weeks ago. The board was sworn in, the school district actually now officially exists. Both Eric and myself were on the new board. Officers were elected, this all happened about two weeks ago. And then next week, there'll be sort of a first full working retreat for that board. So that work goes on and will continue. The CSSU debrief. Do you want to highlight anything from the meeting?
Before that, I think we need to congratulate you as the vice chair.
Yes.
Thank you. For not being chair, that's a congratulations.
Not the CSW.
No, really, C.
Yeah, it's too many Cs. Did anybody want to highlight anything in particular from the CSSU meeting? I actually, I was a little late getting over there this evening, Susan, Eric. I was pretty late.
You didn't miss much, I mean, they bought a new.
We bought a new truck.
Software system, bought a new truck with a plow.
Yeah, okay.
And there was a good presentation on changes in the healthcare offerings.
I was just going to mention that. So anybody that has any interest in healthcare and in where sort of negotiation, teacher negotiations, this will affect, the healthcare system for all educational employees in the entire state of Vermont is changing significantly in a year. And we had a very nice presentation on it, it's a common topic. Pulled up on our itin, it was walkthrough. I wish you should, I wish you would do that with me for the benefits that I get through our boards.
Well, I think that was important too, what she said was, you know, you can call representative at Blue Cross Blue Shield and the BEH. Because each year, you get to reset your health insurance.
Yeah.
And that that person on the phone can go over what you've done in the past years and what might be the best plan in a way that seems like sometimes those decisions are just made like, what do you, you know, your neighbor signed up for something, like what are they, you know, what are you going to do? But I think they're allowing people to go back through, over what they've paid in the past.
It would behoove us to encourage our employees to start doing that because it's going to affect them greatly.
And there'll be 46,000 people trying to do this by.
Yeah, and, you know, if we can encourage those in our, in our school system, in Charlotte in particular, and in the CSSU, to do it early and informed, that would be great, so we're not behind the curve. 5.4, the fourth quarter FMR. Anybody want to pull up anything in particular or ask a particular question?
Was that the one that had the food service, $27,000 shortfall? Is that typical?
No.
Yeah.
Well, we, there is always a shortfall in food service. We in the past have covered it through the budget and through other processes. I do not know, in particular last year, that is a larger shortfall than we've had before. Food service is a weird thing in education, it's supposed to fund itself. And yet, you know, this is a bailiwick of mine, you know, that's why a lot of chocolate milk gets sold in our schools, because that's what kids buy, right? You will find food services across the SU operate differently, the high school makes money, and a high school makes a lot of money up there cafeteria, teenagers eat a lot. But this, you know, this last year, Charlotte did not. So it's not that unusual. It's a little bigger number than we're used to, but not outsized. Do you want to talk about it a little bit?
Just that we're talking.
Okay.
We're talking about ideas with both Elizabeth and Bob.
Okay.
I don't know that you can answer this question yet, but once consolidation actually comes into being and, so food service across the entire supervisory union, do you, do you know whether or not those costs will be, I mean, they'll be shared, I'm presuming throughout the union, and would it, would they, would we not have to encounter such a deficit potentially going forward?
So right, that, so right, the next budget is consolidated and that, that food service budget will be consolidated with the high school, which makes a lot of money. And yes, so that kind of, those numbers will look different, yes. We already coordinate a little bit on purchasing and that sort of, you know, purchase power helps. But you also don't want to lose, I mean, there's a certain amount of, you know, my kids discovered kale chips that are cafeteria, you don't want to lose that kind of thing either, you know, that's difficult to balance. Just selling hamburgers is easy, making sure kids, making sure kids who buy lunches can get a healthy lunch and want a healthy lunch is not a different.
But there should be some efficiencies that would be able to be, taken advantage of it when it's shared.
Yes. And I am no expert on how much we share costs in food service now, like I'm sure we share costs as far as like buying hamburger buns. But yes, there will be some efficiencies to be realized. And, and again, since all the costs will be coordinated, then you'll be able to take advantage of, yeah, I think Williston makes some money too up there cafeteria.
So there is one?
Yes.
Can I share with you? So there is a chart that shows that there's an increase in percentage of, in participation, which means that we have more children actually buying, it's just that we have less children.
Interesting. So percentage-wise, we have more children.
It's gone up. So it's 46.3% of fiscal year 14, fiscal year 15, 51.4, and it's 52.8. It's just went up.
I will stop making the words.
Do you know how that compares to the other elementary schools? Do you know how that compares to the other elementary schools, what their percentages are?
I do not.
Okay.
No.
I think it's just like everything else in life, when you get down to small enough numbers, the volatility creates inefficiency, right? So if you have to prepare thinking that a certain amount of kids are going to eat every day of the week and one day they don't, you've got a lot more waste than in a school where, let's say if you, there's 1,400 kids, you know, you're always, as a percentage, it's much closer to being accurate, I would think.
Yeah.
And our kids are pickier, you know, in high school, you're hungry, you eat. In elementary school, it may not be the case, so you might not buy that much.
If anything comes up, you know, clearly send a question. 5.5, budget assumptions, this is in our packet for information only. The next budget will be crafted by the new CVSD board. This is the beginning of the budget process. But comments are always welcome. 6.0, discussion matters. So this is our discussion matter that's on every single agenda that we ever have, but this week, this month, it's a little different, only because we have a new editor at the Charlotte News. And I'm going to get her name wrong, it's Lynn Monte, I believe, she actually used to be a reporter at the Burlington Free Press. Alex Plutton, good luck Alex, has received an offer to do other things, huge supporter of our school as far as getting kids involved and that sort of thing. Lynn has called me, I'm hoping that she'll get in touch with you, continue sort of tradition that we've created of having kids do some writing for the paper and that sort of thing. Having said all that, does anybody have a topic that they're interested in writing about for the paper coming up? Having anticipated this. Let me say that I would like to get us, we have, we, actually last year, we weren't terrible last year, there was, especially around budget time, we tend to really kick it up, there was some hurdles. I'd like to do, and I'm not going to force it tonight, but come up with a topic that you're interested in and let's just dole them out. Let's do one a month, even if it's just one a month, it doesn't have to be in every paper. If we each do one, that's half the work. And then Eric will do the rest.
Anyone who's not on this CVSD.
Yeah.
And anybody who doesn't go to the CSSU meetings beforehand.
Yeah.
Nice try, Susan.
So put some thought in that.
I'll be the clerk, I'll be the clerk.
So your question is intentionally to promote or to educate or to engage or to maybe anticipate angst about?
Honestly, any of those things.
Okay.
I would, I hesitate to use the word promote, although.
Right, well, I was just borrowing that from.
Yeah, no, but to take something in the school that we don't think people know about, that we do and we do well, which is everything. No, but that maybe people don't understand gets done by a public school. And write about that. Or if there's a particular subject that, I mean, your kids have been through the school and you thought the school did really well, some way to flush that out, using some of our task force or something, that sort of thing, or diversity, or, you know, or maybe something we don't do well. Is a possibility too. So we'll talk about it next time.
Okay.
But before next time, we could start switching some emails around just to kind of get something going, because I didn't make any promises to the new editor, but I may have said we'll try.
And are there going to be submissions about the consolidation? That's kind of a hot topic.
Yes, there will be, again, there's a meeting next week, well, there won't after that.
Okay.
And those will be, I'm sure there'll be at least one Charlotte specific one, but there'll probably be some that are more general and they're circulated among all the local papers.
Right, okay.
But again, that's all me just taking off topic.
Okay.
Action Matters. The board plan is in here, did anybody have any particular comments on the work plan for the year? You'll notice that we're off, this board is off for a couple of months, that's the budgeting season, which will be done at the, at the new board. So actually before you, if there's any discussion, can I get a motion to approve it?
So moved.
A second. Any particular discussion? All those in favor of approving the work plan as a, say aye.
Aye.
7.2, this Friday is the annual meeting of the Vermont Educational Health Initiative, VIHI, and in conjunction with the Vermont School Board Insurance Trust. This is how these two entities represent us, but they are, they produce this book. They are the people who run the health insurance for the state, the educational employees of the state. We have two members going, Colleen McKinnon and Elaine Pickney is backup. We're sending them as a proxy to do voting as necessary. There's actual language for this. Megan, do you want to say option A?
Option A, a point as its authorized representative to vote on its behalf, the following person for the vote.
So the actual motion would be this board approves Colleen McKinnon as principal and Elaine Pickney as backup in option A for our voting purposes at the annual meeting of VIHI Visibit. Kind of a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Second. Sure, what is it? I think it's this Friday. 20th, is that right? I'm saying the 20th, that's all right.
This one says the 21st. One of them says the 21st.
You can spread it, I thought it was the 23rd as well.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is Friday.
And so we're taking, to be clear, anybody's welcome to go from this board that wants to go. I don't know the answer to that.
Is it Lake Maury?
I'm going to look it up.
No, that's the.
It's the other one.
This is, it's my email.
Might be Lake Maury.
Oh, yeah.
I'll look it up, you guys.
All important things happening.
Do they have an agenda for today?
Something, Sandy sent something around.
Yeah, as usual, like last minute, it'd be nice to get board preparation materials more than like the same day.
So, but that's what's. It's a company, it'll be next.
All I have is Sandy's reminder.
All right, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out. Any other discussion?
Oh, here we go. Sorry. That's why I have a mission. It's not Friday at all, it's October 20th. That's the VSBA conference. That's different. It is Friday, it's the VIHI. Sorry.
So if there's no other discussion, I call a question. All those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess, whatever.
And a whatever. Thank you. And finally, for action matters, we have a new teacher in the school, a full-time grade four teacher, her name is Lynda Poirier. Is that how you say it? Good, glad I got that right. Her contract is signed by me during the summer, using some of our authority. She has been working and all indications are, she's been warmly received. Parents are extremely excited to have her. Can I have a motion to approve the, well, actually to reaffirm the authority, reaffirm the summer authority to sign, Lynda Poirier's contract.
So moved.
Yeah, have a second. Any particular discussion? All those in favor? Aye. That's it for action matters. Consent agenda, have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Are we going to go back to the Charlotte work plan? Or no? I just had a quick question.
Yeah, shoot.
So the budget process, common topic is going to talk about the scope of the work that the other board, the new board is doing. that the other board, the new board is doing.
That's my guess.
Okay. So I'm just trying to figure out what's, you know, how some of us are sort of tapering off.
I know some of you are excited about this.
Well, but we're also going to, like, well
No, no, no.
Yeah. It's not until March-ish anyway, you know. Some people have to perhaps run again to close out the
We'll get to that. I have not figured out what exactly happens.
Okay.
Yeah, because the truth is, we may be able to appoint for the final three months, but I don't know for sure.
So then as far as the budget meetings go, you'll report back to us?
Yes.
So we will not be attending, but there will, and there will not be board, there will not be budget meetings at Charlotte Central School like they were in the past?
Not run by this board.
Okay.
No. There will be budget meeting in Charlotte, just different people running the ship.
Thank you.
So going back, we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next meeting dates are listed here. October 18th is the next regular meeting of this board. I opened it up to director's comments for the night. Jeff, do you have anything?
Just that it does feel like the year has gotten off to a great start, and feels like people, just the amount of time that I've been in school, that people are glad to be back. I'm seeing a lot of smiles. It feels like things are just kind of rolling and in place, and there's a good spirit. So it's nice to, nice to see and nice to feel that within the school. So thank you, Barbara.
Sue, anything?
I don't have anything to say. No comments.
So, one, I cannot promise that all meetings will be this short. Two, this is not your first meeting, but your first meeting on camera. So Sue Kibo, thank you for helping us out for this year and coming back to the board, filling in for Clyde Baldwin. And to Clyde Baldwin, who may or may not be watching, but for everybody, we appreciate the years of service put forward on this board. So thank you for that. With that, anything else? We're adjourned.